Two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Delaware County Board of Commissioners. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
All right, thank you. I am Jeff Benton, Vice President of the Board this year. President of our board is not here today. To my right is fellow Commissioner Gary Merrill, our Administrator Tracy Davies, and Deputy Administrator Don Houston, our Deputy Administrator and General Counsel Eric Posttler is in the audience, and our clerks Randy Wilson and Jennifer Walraven. We can begin.
Resolution number two-five dash eight-three-nine in the matter of approving the electronic recorded proceedings from regular meeting held October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
So move.
Second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-five dash eight-three-nine. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
We have some public comment, but Mr. Davis is actually going to speak on item number five. Resolution number two-five dash eight-four-zero in the matter of approving purchase orders and announced certificates and payments of warrants in batch number CM APR one-zero-one-seven and procurement card payments in batch number PC APR one-zero-one-seven.
So move.
Second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-five dash eight-four-zero. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash eight-four-one in the matter of canceling the Delaware County Commissioner's session scheduled for Thursday, October twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
So move.
Second, discussion, vote?
Vote on motion two-five dash eight-four-one. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Before we address item number five, Commissioner Merrill and Director official have another business discussion item that...
With your blessing, I have some introductory remarks, and I'll turn over to Chief official. I was approached last Wednesday regarding a mapping of the schools in our county and for a million-dollar grant that may be available. Sixty-six applicants, sixty-six counties nationwide as a federal grant, fully paid for by the government. And I'll be honest, I didn't go into it very optimistic Wednesday last week, and became aware of it. We, the deadline is next Monday to show intent, and the following Monday for the application. But after listening to the Zoom call that we coordinated for Friday, and Chief official joined me, and he's going to speak in just a moment, I left it very optimistic about the program if we were one of the sixty-six selected. And there's a lot of work to do between now and next week, and we have to follow the application of intent, and then the application followed thereafter. It will include all schools in our county, and again, very, it'd be very competitive, only being sixty-six counties, but Critical Response Group who would do the work seemed very optimistic. We'd at least have a pretty good shot at it for a number of reasons. And with that, I'm good, I'm not going to, we have several people attended, my request at Chief official's request, from various entities that will be very important as he coordinates a Zoom meeting for this Thursday. I thank each of you for being here, and after the presentation, if you have something to add, your thoughts, it'd be very much appreciated as well. With that, Chief official?
Morning Commissioners, Jeff official, Director of EMS Delaware County. As Commissioner Merrill stated, we were made aware of a grant opportunity, and we attended a Zoom meeting last Friday, which pointed out to us a grant worth a million dollars with no, it's federal dollars with no local match. In listening to the presentation, I thought that it would be very advantageous to the schools' public safety. To kind of put things into summary, here in Delaware County, we have great schools, great public safety. The schools submit their safety plans every year to whoever their local EMS, fire department, and law enforcement entity would be. We review it, we sign off on it, schools have mapping, we review the mapping, all of this is done. What this program does, it's called a collaborative response graphic, or collaborative response map, is it takes this information, and these, this company, this individual, these individuals will come on site, they will walk around the school, they will verify everything, they'll turn the school to a true north, and if we were to show up to an incident at that school, every responder, no matter the entity, an example I used during the Zoom call was if we had an incident up in the Ashley area, and PAL PD was coming up with us, they would, they would gladly come up for assistance. However, they probably would not readily have available to them the maps of the school or anything like that. This would, would change that, it would make them, available to them virtually instantly through, through their iPads or their computers, what have you. And it lays out the mapping on sort of what was described as like a battleship, the game Battleship-type grid platform. So when we show up to the school, if nine-one-one says the call was made from D three, because Rapid SOS would ping where the caller's coming from, we're able to look at the map, call was made from D three, everybody knows where D three is because everybody's looking at the same map oriented to the true north. If we enter the school, and they're making their way through it, and you know, unfortunately they find victims or something, and they say it's an EF, everybody's able to look at the map, know exactly where that's at, know exactly where windows, doors, all that kind of stuff is. So it's just a great way to help improve collaborative communication from all entities that would respond to an incident, and it just makes sure it's up to date and accurate. Schools, you know, they go through remodels and such, but it has my support, I thought it was a great idea. I'm optimistic that we can hopefully move this through. We do have a Q and A Zoom session, which I sent out to all fire chiefs, law enforcement, schools in the county, and that's scheduled for Thursday. This covers every K through twelve school in the county, including private schools. I did confirm it also covers, or we can have the Career Center included in this grant as well. And I'm here to answer any questions, if not, I'll ask some of the individuals behind me to speak on it, and answer any questions anybody has.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. When, when would the, when do the applications due, when would decisions be made, funding available, et cetera?
I don't think we're far enough, I don't think we've received that information about the funding available and such in the meeting on Friday. Certainly, we will get more information on Thursday. The application, the full application's due November third, and then as Commissioner Merrill stated, the intent is due Monday.
Monday at five, I think, it's Monday.
So it's just a placeholder is what it is, and then we would like to get everybody together for a Q and A, make sure they support it, make sure that, you know, everybody would like to participate, because we're not going to move forward if, you know, the schools and the public safety entities don't feel like it's something that's beneficial. And then we would put forth the full application on November third.
So you don't know when the decision would be made? And which department is this? Which federal agency is this?
DOJ. And it's the Stop School Violence Initiative is what it's called.
We have a number of representatives here, some of you know more than others, some I've spoken to, some Director officials probably spoken to. If you want to have anything to add, or you like the idea, it'd be good to hear from you at this time, if you want to make any comments. And you may have not known enough to comment, that's also understandable.
Yeah, I had another question for Director official. So this is just K through twelve, it's not necessarily like Ohio Westland and Columbus State campuses?
Just the K through twelve is what's eligible for the grant.
Okay.
And Chief Salles, or Salles, sorry, PAL PD was on the Zoom call as well, so...
That's correct, yeah.
Anything you...
Chief, introduce yourself, and then...
Welcome. Good morning, I'm Ron Salles, I'm the Chief of Police of the City of Powell. I learned about CRG about three weeks ago at a law enforcement conference. They showed the demo, much similar to what we went through this past Friday. The, it immediately came apparent that this could be a benefit to law enforcement, first responders. For about the last ten years, law enforcement has collaborated together about getting into active shooter situations, how we're going to get medics and law enforcement together to save lives, to reduce the time that it takes to get there. So this was apparent, from the other law enforcement officials that were in the room with me, they were already using these maps, and they were saying, we are saving lives through our critical incidents. And I thought, what a great way to bring this here through the Ohio State Wexner Medical Center that is going to be developed, that's going to be opening next summer in the city of Powell. So this application for this grant is through the schools right now, but there are many other applications in the county, such as medical facilities, other, other large office buildings, and those sort of things. So it, it, number one, it gives you an immediate understanding of the layout of the school or the location that you're dealing with, it's faster access to the threat, it avoids dead ends and confusion between law enforcement, fire, and EMS. It also has enhanced coordination and communication, it supports the mutual aid that we had talked about, improved rescue and evacuation. I know Jeff had mentioned that if we have injuries in a certain location, getting medics to that location, so we're all on the same map and working from that, is very important. It also helps with tactical and safety advantages, knowing what the building layout is, knowing whether there's a concealment or cover within the building, it might be some of our tactical considerations, how we move in, in that location to isolate the threat and/or to treat individuals there. It also provides a training and preparedness response to this, so not only to the maps that they provide, they will come out and help you with tabletops and preparing for your responses. So I would definitely be in support of continuing to look at this, and then not only just with the schools, but other areas that are critical throughout the county. Thank you.
It also includes the training, in addition to the mapping.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm glad Chief Salles brought that up, it, I left that out. They don't just give you the maps, they do tabletops, they train you on the maps, they train you on responding to the building through the tabletops, so I'm glad he, he brought that piece up, because that's a big component of the grant, it's a three-step process.
There's a number of people here representing some of these organizations that'd be affected by it, if anyone want to comment? Introduce yourself, Rick.
Good morning, I'm Rick Strangis, Superintendent Buckeye Valley Schools. For decades, commissioners, trustees, law enforcement, and schools have, have always celebrated the fact that we do things differently in Delaware County. We do things collaboratively in Delaware County, something we always take great pride in. As school superintendent, my focus is student safety. And if there's a way that we can combine our collaborative spirit with school safety, not only will I support it, but I will spearhead it. I'll work with superintendents around the county to make sure we get, at least to get this grant, at least give us a fighting chance to get it. You have my hundred percent support. Thank you for today.
Great, thanks, Rick. Welcome.
Morning Commissioners and Administrator Davies, I, my name's Jenna McDevitt, I'm the Director of Business Management and Facilities for Olentangie Local Schools. We have twenty-seven school buildings, and we've got over twenty-four thousand students. And we greatly appreciate everything that the Delaware County Commissioners have done to support our schools, and for all the first responders and the SROs that we have in our buildings. We're very excited to collaborate on this, and we fully support this initiative.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so anyone else?
Good morning Commissioners, Lauren Yan-Kennen, Director of nine-one-one, relatively new to this project that we're talking about here. But I do want to say, it is something that already functions with some of the resources that we use in the Communication Center, so this would integrate very well with all our workflows that we already have in, in the room. And also, when you're a dispatcher in the room, sometimes what's happening at the scene is, is really abstract for you, and it's very challenging to really find a common language with responders on the scene with what it is that they're seeing, and where they're, they need to go, and that kind of thing. So in this type of situation, it would be very beneficial to have such a map that we would be able to really speak this same language with the responders on, on the scene, so I am supportive of this initiative.
Appreciate it.
Good morning Commissioners, Sheriff Jeff Bowser. Like Director Yan-Kennen, I'm kind of coming a little bit late to the party, I wasn't able to be on the call on Friday, but I'm looking forward to the teleconference or the Zoom meeting this week. I briefed my staff on it, and Dr. Strangis hit on all the points. We are different in Delaware County, we all work together. We, I look forward to learning more about this opportunity, because when a significant incident like this happens, it's not going to be just the Delaware County Sheriff's Office or the Powell Police that show up, it's going to be us, it's going to be the state troopers, it's going to be Columbus Police, everybody's going to be coming up to help out, and all the fire districts as well. So the better we can be prepared in advance by sharing this information, I think we'll be able to better respond, and it will hopefully save lives. So again, I'm very interested in this opportunity, and we want to lend our support as well. Thank you.
Anyone else? I appreciate everybody being here, and Thursday, what time is the Zoom call, do you know that?
It, Thursday, this Thursday is from one to two.
I'm sorry?
It's from one o'clock to two o'clock.
And if you don't, you probably won't have all the email addresses to get the word out, so, or do you think you have a method to get, get it out to everybody, who, the private schools?
I, I sent it out to roughly thirty-something ad, email addresses, I did ask in the email if I, if I'd missed somebody, please forward it along, I did see some forwarded links in there. But certainly, as we learn of other email addresses to, for example, private schools that maybe we don't have, we will make sure it gets sent to them as well.
Yeah, so, yeah, if anyone involved knows anyone that may have advantage, worst case, they get it twice, so be sure and get the word out to them. My only comment, I, like I said, I didn't go into this positively because of the timeline, I'm very excited about the prospects, I appreciate everybody being here, and Commissioner Benton, I think what's needed today is our blessing for him to go forward with the Zoom call, and the indication that there is an interest after this Thursday Zoom call that we would be in a position to authorize the, basically getting the application, not the application, but the intent on next Monday, and in the following Monday, the application has to be filed. So I'm fully supportive going forward.
Yeah, I mean, everything I've heard this morning indicates this is a, certainly a worthwhile project that we need to pursue, so I would, I would also encourage taking the next step.
So we'll have, if, if we're all on the same page next week, Monday, we'll need a resolution to write that, so...
Right.
Okay? I appreciate everybody being here, thank you.
Yeah, thank you all for showing up on such late notice on such a big project that really could be a huge impact for, for us, so thank you all. All right, Jennifer, you want to keep going?
Okay, item number five, resolution number two-five dash eight-four-two in the matter of filing an agreement and plans for the construction of the drainage improvements to county-owned property at the intersection of State Route five-twenty-one and Bixby Parkway with the O'Brien number four-four-zero watershed drainage improvement project, and authorizing a petition to vacate a portion of the O'Brien number four-four-zero watershed drainage improvement project upon completion of the improvements.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning, Eric.
I'm sorry, we do also have someone that wants to speak on the side.
We'll do that after comments?
Yeah, I'll just introduce what's going on here.
Okay.
Eric Posttler, General Counsel. As a part of the development of the Social Services Building out of the Bixby Campus, the property is actually a part of the O'Brien Watershed, and so there is a sixty-one-thirty-one project already in place out there. So the site improvements that we are going to make for that building would alter that improvement. So there's a statutory process we have to go through in order to alter that improvement. I'll let John Melvin talk about what actually is all entailed, but this resolution before you just initiates that process whereby the county would be constructing those drainage improvements as a part of our project, we would pay one hundred percent of the cost of those improvements, we would take on one hundred percent of the maintenance costs, and then at the same time, we would file a petition to vacate that portion of the existing project, which would then mean reducing the, the base on which maintenance assessments for everybody else are calculated. So I can answer any questions about the statutory process, I have John up here to talk about the project itself, and then I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any, especially after the public comment, if there are any additional questions.
Yeah, an unusual situation to be sure, so John, if you want to describe the project to us?
John Melvin, Director of Facilities, as Eric described, currently there's an easement that would go through the building footprint, and it ties to drainage that comes across from the north side of five-twenty-one. Mr. Davis had provided information during the roundabout construction, identified actually there's three tiles that come across. So with the process, we have designed to move the easement section outside of the building footprint, kind of go to the southwest, and create an easement there near the retention pond, so that's the preliminary design so far. As, as noted, currently we are submitting the site work to the city for approval, we're still, this would be the early GMP, we're still in design of this whole project, building design probably won't be done until February, so, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any other questions, at this point, we'll, at this point, we'll invite Mr. Davis, come on up, and I know you live in that area, and...
Across the street.
Yeah, yeah.
Morning Commissioners.
Welcome, welcome, if you could identify yourself, we're recording this.
Thomas Davis, you need address?
Pardon me?
Address.
Address, please.
Yeah, two-zero-six-one, State Route five-twenty-one, across the street from this proposed development. This came attention just last Thursday, so I finally got some updates on it, and you know, and it's just the fact that we have three tiles that drain over there, ones from the farm field, and two of them come off our house and pond area. And I just want to make sure they're taken care of. They can't, they're lower than the ditch on the opposite side of the road, so they are below the grade of the ditch, so it, it is a little more complicated than just dumping it into the ditch on the south side of five-twenty-one, since they're deeper. Just wanted to make sure that it's taken care of. The plans right now just show the tile there, but it doesn't show how they're going to be handled. I assume that'll be coming up later, I'd like to see the drawings for that. We just went through the same thing, the west of us in the new housing development. We had several meetings about the tile going across there, and they did the engineering plans and everything, and there was a mistake, and they corrected it, and we're all on the same page now for that one, so I hope this one goes as well, too, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. John, any comments? We have Brett Furtifer from the Engineer's Office in the back.
Yeah, yeah, like I mentioned, Mr. Davis brought us information about the three tiles crossing the road, shared that information with the client engineer, who's the engineer doing this, and they're in contact with Soil and Water Engineer's Office. I know, as you mentioned, we just show on these preliminary plans, addressing the main tile that comes across, I know there's been emails back and forth with Soil and Water, they're trying to establish the elevations of those to tie them, to show them on the engineered drawing, so they've been fully made aware of those tiles, that we need to reconnect those, and make sure they're connected into the main tile that we show in the easement section. As Mr. Davis knows, I'm sure those are, we're not going to be able to daylight those, we're not going to be able to route them into the retention ponds, we want to make sure we catch those and pull them in. The one to the, further south, obviously, as it's shown right now, on the plans, the two to the north, again, the engineer's not knowing the exact elevations, we need to coordinate the sanitary, any water, any utilities coming in there, they're kind of in the same location. But they are well aware of this, I've stressed that we need to make sure we tie those in and address this drainage issues.
What's the timing and the process going forward then, John? Maybe Eric, want to comment on that?
Once, once these plans are, are submitted, they go to review by the county engineer, Soil and Water would review them as well. I'm not sure how that timing will line up with the city's review, if the city has any changes, we'll have to, you know, address that. But the statute calls for a sixty-day review period, so that's, that's kind of the outside timeline that we're looking at, hopefully it'll get wrapped up sooner than that, so we don't impact any type of work schedule out there. With the timing for the vacation of the existing easement, I can't offer any timeline on that.
Okay, okay, when will the work be done then? John, maybe that'd be...
As noted, these are the drawings that were submitted to the city for review, they've been provided to Gilbane to, to work on GMP one. I know our target to have that GMP one before the Commissioners is right before Thanksgiving, to authorize the work to begin, you know, contracts, so anticipated, the, the goal is mid-December to start moving dirt out there, so that's just the preliminary start of work out there. And this first GMP would just, again, would be the site package, and also the pre-engineered metal building, so...
Now, Mr. Davis, I'm sure we'll do our best to keep you up to date. Yeah, Eric, another comment?
I just wanted to emphasize again that this is the initiation of this process.
Right.
So there's, there's more to come, many, many more steps to get this changed officially.
Okay, very good.
So basically, we're just starting the process.
Yeah, yeah. This is unusual, I don't think we've seen one of these where we're amending, you know, vacating, amending, so on, a ditch, ditch, so, okay. All right, Trustee Skinner, did you have any comments or anything you wanted to weigh in on? I know you're, you're, you're trustee over Brown Township, which is obviously where we are, and farmer in the area.
Good morning, Connie Skinner, Brown Township trustee. I did not fill out a form to speak, I'll gladly fill one of those out and catch you up. I just want to say, please keep us informed, please keep us involved, and I know John Melvin and the engineers in Soil and Water will do a great job, just don't flood the neighbors, be good neighbors.
Yeah, yeah.
There are farm fields and homes in the area, so don't let this water issue become their water issue, so appreciate the heads up, and everybody working together. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think what I heard today was, we were well aware of that, and we're going to make sure there's no issues, so...
Okay, anything else? Comments, Commissioner Merrill, any?
I, I think, move forward.
Yeah, I would agree. Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-five dash eight-four-two. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Item number six, resolution number two-five dash eight-four-three in the matter of awarding a bid and approving a contract between the Delaware County Commissioners and Two K General Company Incorporated for the project known as Delaware County Dog Shelter Modular Office.
Second, discussion.
Good morning, John Melvin, Director of Facilities, we received one bid for the installation of the mobile modular office we purchased for the dog shelter, Two K was the low bidder, a hundred, hundred-and-fifteen thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars, recommending award.
All right, what would be the timing of getting this?
When I met with Two K to do the scope review, they're anticipating about three-month schedule to get this completed. Still working, just, I'm still working on obtaining the building permit, have to go through, we're on Septics, I got to go through the Health Department, then submit to Brown Township.
I'm sure Brown Township will cooperate.
And then we'll send to the, you know, the building department.
They're good neighbors.
Yeah, they're good neighbors.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-five dash eight-four-three. Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five dash eight-four-four in the matter of approving a request for statement of qualifications, architectural engineering design services as architect of record for the new EMS Station Three Sheriff's Office South Substation for Delaware County, Ohio.
So move.
Second, discussion.
This is the start of the process to select a design team for the above-mentioned project, which will be a new station, replace the Lewis Center EMS Station Three, as well as move the south substation out of the old DD building to this location, again, be selecting the architect of record for the project.
Yeah, I know, I, I think we need to just stay in touch with Orange Township as well, because I know they're planning on fires, adding a fire station, if we could somehow coordinate, you know, the three locating in the same building, that would probably save time and money, so...
Sure. Are we on a month-to-month at the current location of the lease?
I'm, I do not know the status of the Lewis Center, so...
I thought we did an annual renewal not too long ago, but...
At some point, you probably want to go to month-to-month.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we're still, again, you know, just starting the process to design, we're still a year and a half, two years out, probably before completion and move in.
Commissioners Tracy Davies, Administrator, Orange Township is very aware of this project. At this time, they're not able to partner on the fire piece of it, but they're also well aware of our need to move out of their building, and have agreed to work with us when that time happens.
Yeah, I would just like to see as if we can, you know, build a joint station and collaborate, but it may not work, but I'd like to see that happen if we can. Any other comments, questions? Jennifer?
Vote on motion two-five dash eight-four-four. Mr. Merrill?
Aye.
Mr. Benton?
Aye.
Resolution number two-five... Resolution number 25-845. In the matter of approving amendment number one to the professional services agreement with ADR and Associates Limited for Dell CR 039.0.68, Rome Corners Road at Plum Road Intersection Improvements.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning. Rob Riley, Chief Deputy Engineer. We currently have a contract with ADR and Associates to do the engineering for a proposed roundabout at the intersection of Rome Corners and Plum Road. This is currently kind of an awkward offset T-intersection. We are in preliminary design right now. The developer of the Mirror Luna residential project has come to us, and we are proposing this amendment to the current contract to incorporate part of the widening that will need to be happening on Rome Corners Road for that development. So the cost of this will be offset by contribution by the developer towards that proposed work, and we'll be able to include that with the roundabout project. Really will result in less disruption for the public and some economy in the construction. So currently, as it stands, we have this intersection project penciled in for 2028 or 2029 construction. So moving ahead to try to get online roughly when the development starts getting built out.
Okay. And the contribution you're receiving is sufficient?
Yes.
Okay. Is that in writing, or I assume it's been written?
It will be part of the development agreement for the project, but yes, there's an understanding for it.
Okay. Vote, Jennifer, please.
Vote on motion 25-845. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-846. In the matter of approving the drainage maintenance petition and ditch maintenance assessment for Honey Grove.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Honey Grove is a 54-lot, single-family subdivision at North Star. This action will place that drainage system on the county's maintenance program.
Okay. Questions, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-846. Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-847. In the matter of approving cooperative project agreements between Delaware County and various political subdivisions within Delaware County to submit applications to the Ohio Public Works Commission.
So move.
Second, discussion.
As you know, we have a history of working with our local government partners to provide some matching funds towards their state and federal grant applications. This is a resolution we typically do each year to combine all those in a single resolution. As part of our roadway grant assistance program, we'll provide $3 for each dollar of local contribution towards the OPWC applications that are listed. So we have about 10 potential projects as a result of this. Historically, not all, fair to say, not all of those will be funded, because that program is very competitive. But I will say, this, our program goes a long way in trying to get some of the tax dollars we send to Columbus, get those back into Delaware County, because as you know, we send a lot of money down south and only get a portion of that back. So this is a good way of doing that and really supporting our local government partners.
Yeah. Rob, do you have a kind of a general description? A lot of the townships, the Village Road's granters in here, kind of a general description? Is it mostly resurfacing or?
These are mostly resurfacing projects, paving, and different surface treatments for various roads.
Okay, all right. All right, Jennifer, vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-847. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-848. In the matter of approving the Platts of Subdivision for Honey Grove and Oaks at Berlin.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Again, Honey Grove located in Berkshire Township, and then Oaks at Berlin is located in Berlin Township off Pyatt Road, across from the middle school. These Platts have been approved by all the required county agencies and recommend your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments? Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-848. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-849. In the matter of declaring the necessity for improvements to the intersection of Sunbury Road and Big Walnut Road and authorizing Commissioner Lewis to submit an application for funding assistance to the Ohio Public Works Commission.
So move.
Second, discussion.
We are currently in design for this proposed intersection improvement that will involve a single-lane roundabout at Sunbury and Big Walnut Road. The, this would be the county's application for OPWC funding for roughly $500,000 towards the approximate $1.8 to $2 million construction cost for this project. Currently have this planned for starting work probably in 2027 at this point. We still have some work to do with getting the plans done, utility relocation, and purchasing the necessary right-of-way.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-849. Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-850. In the matter of approving right-of-way work permit summary sheet.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Eighteen permits for today, recommending approval.
A lot of fiber optic. That's been the case in the last month or two.
That has definitely been the case, Commissioner. We've got a lot of fiber optic activity in the county right now.
Yeah, it's great to see. They're filling, filling in, doing the fiber work we've been working on, getting ready to go. So it's good to see it's being implemented. Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion 25-850. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-851. In the matter of accepting the roads, approving recommended speed limits, and releasing bonds for the district at Berkshire.
So move.
Second, discussion.
District Berkshire is located across from the outlet mall, across Wilson Road from the outlet mall, I should say. As part of that development, a short segment of public road was built, and this action would accept that as a new public road, establish a speed limit, and release the maintenance bond.
Okay. Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion 25-851. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Resolution number 25-852. In the matter of approving joint application by the prosecuting attorney and the Board of County Commissioners to the Common Pleas Court to authorize the Board to employ Gregory P. Barwell of the law firm W.E.S.P. Barwell &amp; Bernard LLC as outside legal counsel to advise, represent, prosecute on behalf of and for defend Ken O'Brien, Delaware County Treasurer in his official capacity in the action captured Donald E. Ranky Jr. versus Delaware County Board of Commissioners and others, case number 25CVH040425.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Christopher Betts, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney with the Delaware County Prosecutor's Office. I think that takes the prize for the longest title of a resolution this morning.
I was going to ask her to repeat it, but...
As was mentioned, this is a joint application on behalf of the Commissioners and the Prosecutor's Office for outside counsel for Treasurer O'Brien in the case of Don Ranky versus Board of Commissioners. Obviously, the Prosecutor's Office has a conflict of interest, since we're statutory legal counsel to both the Board and the Treasurer, and Treasurer O'Brien has just come on. The case was originally filed by the Treasurer in his official capacity. So Treasurer O'Brien will need that representation going forward. So this is that joint application, and as I say, Prosecutor O'Brien has already gone ahead and approved it. If you approve it, then we'll get it over to the court for the court to then approve that and get this counsel appointed for Treasurer O'Brien.
How does that affect the current counsel?
At this point, I think that counsel is still in place. Obviously, Treasurer Ranky, or former Treasurer Ranky, is not treasurer anymore. I don't know how much longer that representation will last at this point. I can't say. I know it was intended to conclude upon his leaving office, but I'm not sure it has concluded yet.
Okay. Further comments, questions?
I, I'll just leave it at that. I assume it's going to be addressed at some point in some form.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
Vote on motion 25-852. Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Thank you.
Resolution number 25-853. In the matter of acknowledging receipt of annexation petition from agent for the petitioner, Jeffrey W. Sharp Esquire, requesting annexation of 2.537 acres of land of Berkshire Township to the village of Galena.
So move.
Second, discussion. I think this is just property owned by the Village of Galena, but it isn't incorporated in the Galena, so it's just...
It's a by municipality type. We don't see too many of those. In fact, next week, we'll have an action for the Board to consider granting the resolution.
Okay. Vote, please.
Vote on motion 25-853. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
We do have one item for other business for the Sheriff's Office this morning, resolution number 25-854. In the matter of authorizing the submitting of an application for the state homeland security program grant through the Ohio Emergency Management Agency for the Delaware County Sheriff's Office.
So move.
Second, discussion.
Good morning. Mikel Roy, Finance Director, Delaware County Sheriff's Office. This would allow our office to apply for a grant for funding. There's no local match, but it could be anywhere between 20, minimum of $25,000 up to $250,000 if approved for the grant. This would allow some of the rescue task force that we have in place, some of the additional training and everything that we provide through that could potentially go through the grant, as well as some of our tactical unit requests that we see for either gear or their training as well.
Okay. Vote, Jennifer?
Vote on motion 25-854. Mr. Merrill?
Hi.
Mr. Benton?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mikel.
Brings us to administrative reports.
No, thanks, Mikel. Thank you.
Don, Eric, Mr. Merrill?
I really don't have anything to add other than, of course, our board retreat is this end of this week, so I'll be involved in that on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
All right. Just a couple things. I went to the Foundation Dinner Thursday evening. Very well attended, very, very, just an amazing event. Delaware County Foundation puts on this annual evening of generosity, and some really deserving honorees. One of our close associates, Frank Reinhardt, Volunteer of the Year, and there are others that, you know, very deserving award winners, so congratulations to them. Morpsy Lunch today is about housing. So I don't know if anybody else is going or not, but this is a huge topic, a very, very timely and challenging topic. The, I've got a 23-study call, study call, later this weekend, I think it's Wednesday.
And I could be attending it tomorrow.
Yeah, there's the group meeting yesterday, and then, or tomorrow, and then Wednesday is the, just the update. I'll be doing one-on-one with the local Low Dot folks. Got a SEPCO board meeting on Wednesday. We have no session on Thursday, as we just went through the cancellation. And then Saturday, interestingly, at High Westland, there's an entrepreneur contest, which is something they've done two or three times now. Very interesting, the local entrepreneurs, it's kind of a Shark Tank sort of thing, and they're putting that on. But Steve Wozniak, who is one of the founders of Apple, is going to be there Saturday. And that's a real, just a real great add to that program and to High Westland and county. And I don't know if anybody went to the running of the Bulldogs on Saturday, but I did. It was hilarious. There were about 100 Bulldogs there, running all over the place. Not very work for day, but very entertaining. So anyway, Jennifer, no need for executive session?
Not that I am aware of, so I...
All right. With no further business, we stand adjourned.
Thank you.